Good evening and welcome to the Port of the Putnam Valley Board of Education Business Meeting of November 21, 2019. Please stand and join me as we salute our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So for our first order of business, I would like resolved to approve the minutes from the work session business meeting of November 7, 2019.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
So we have a couple of presentations tonight. Mr. Love, Dr. Love, do you want to set us up?
So this evening's first presentation is going to be done by our Director of Curriculum Instruction, Jeanette Mastretta is going to provide an overview of curricular and instructional initiatives across all three buildings. So, thank you.
Okay. Just move this a little closer. Good evening. So I have been very fortunate to have the opportunity to visit all three buildings and to spend a lot of time in classrooms, observing teachers, seeing student work, and I am just so beyond impressed with all of the work that I see happening throughout the district. So, tonight I'm just going to kind of take you through each building and just give you some quick little snapshots and highlights of some of the things that are happening. Oh, I go to advance. So at our elementary school, we have our Mandarin program, and this is happening three times a week. We have a Mandarin teacher coming in, working with our kindergarten students, Ms. Jessica. The children absolutely love this program. They're learning letters, they're learning songs, they're learning symbols and colors, and we're just getting really great feedback from the teachers as well. Also, we have in second grade, I wanted to show some of our Science 21 innovative projects. This is our second year with the new science curriculum for second grade. Liz Bros has been partnering with second grade and creating a lot of Makerspace projects that go along with the learning that's happening with Science 21. So she's helping the team organize the lesson materials, helping them set up the lessons in the Makerspace or in the classrooms, and then also assisting in teaching the lessons. And I just want to read a quote from the, one of the teachers' feedback to me was that "The lessons are running more smoothly and the kids are getting so much more out of them in our second year." So they're very happy about that. This is an example from Unit 1, Structures of Properties and Matter. We have our students planning, constructing, and testing bridges that have to support the weight of 21 bears. Also in second grade, we have our instructional support specialist, Kristin I. Rizzo. She is working very closely with second grade, particularly with the writing revolution. They are incorporating strategies from the writing revolution to provide scaffold sequence of strategies with various activities to assist students in developing their sentences. And the teachers are so happy to have her in there. She's modeling lessons. They're finding that the program really connects not only with writing, but also with reading and their thinking and speaking. It's allowing the teachers to embed activities, the writing activities into all content areas. And what you can see here is one particular activity where they were given a bag of words and they had to construct proper sentences. So in fourth grade, whoops, did I skip something? This is our social studies ELA, Unit 1, which is the study of Native Americans. And the classes read pieces of writing such as a Thanksgiving address and the birth of the Hodenshoni, where the children learn their way of life. The Hodenshoni way of life is a simple life. They live in peace and they live with Mother Nature. They use nature for everything. So the children really had very deep, meaningful conversations about that. And what you can see here is we have Justin Donahue over here on the left. He's making a strawberry juice that they found the recipe in this Iroquois book. And with Mrs. Odell, they decided, "Let's make the juice." So they did, and I had it. It was delicious. Over here on the right-hand side, the children worked with Ms. Bros to create longhouses and wompum belts in the Makerspace. Okay, so before I go on to the middle school, I just want to give some other elementary school updates. Our ruler program is still running at the elementary school. Students are familiar with the mood meter. They're using that in the classroom. It's been incorporated into other content, all content areas. Students are able to plot and identify their mood, and also they're using it to talk about mood when they talk about characters in books. Our Cove Care program from Putnam County is working with grades 1 through 4. They are basically focusing on the students making good choices and handling stressful situations. We have Ms. Kilduff, who is working with some of our students. She's doing counseling classes with all grade levels, and she's using the Second Step curriculum, which is a social-emotional learning program that helps transform schools into supportive, successful learning environments. And we're really happy to have Ms. Kilduff working at the elementary school. There's lots of busy action in the Makerspace as well in the elementary school. Writing celebrations are just on display outside of classrooms and on the walls, so I encourage you to check it out. Okay, moving on to the middle school, we have Science 21. So Science 21 has now been introduced to grades 5 and 6. I'm really excited about it. The teachers are really excited about it. We've had the benefit of many of our 5th and 6th grade teachers have previously taught the Science 21 curriculum, so they're very familiar with the way that it's presented and the way that it's laid out. It is an integrated K-6 science curriculum. It's developed locally, right here at Putnam Northern Westchester Bosse's. It is a science program that is designed for teachers, by teachers, and many of our Putnam Valley teachers were some of the founding writers of the program. And now we're sending teachers back with the revised new program. So it is linked to the New York State Learning Standards for Math, Science, and Technology. The emphasis is on investigations that are student-centered and relevant and relatable to students' everyday lives. The focus is hands-on, inquiry-based science, and math, language, and technology are all part of the program as well. And our teachers are very happy to be using the program. And here are some of our kids in action during their experiments. So also at the middle school, I had the opportunity to visit the sustainability class, which is an encore at the middle school, and I found it fascinating. I learned so much from my last visit in the class, and the students were so passionate about sustainability that it was really exciting. I found that students were so shocked to learn about the misuse and waste of water and the percentage of recyclable products that were not being recycled. And there was sort of an outrage among the students when they learned about the percentage of recyclable products that were not being recycled. And it really showed me, wow, they care so much about the environment, and they really took it personally. So other issues within the sustainability course include ocean plastic, the Great Pacific Garbage Patch, impact of ocean waste on wildlife, single-use plastics, zero-waste lifestyle movement, garbage management practices in New York City, recycling food waste, e-waste, and chemical charge, I'm sorry, climate change. And Ms. Riley is the teacher that teaches this course. She incorporates sustainability principles also within her 7th grade ELA class. So last week, after they finished a unit on A Long Walk to Water, the students hit the wellness trail, which is pictured here, for a water walk. And the students all walked the one-mile trail carrying one or two gallons of water. So this experience was designed to help them really recognize the struggles of people that live in regions of the world where water is scarce, and it also really helped them to understand how privileged we are to have such easy access to water here at home. At the middle school, Yale Ruler is being used as a guide to teach the students how to identify and deal with their emotions. Ruler is very visible in the middle school. You'll see posters, you'll see bulletin boards. It's used during advisory, and students are plotting their feelings. Social-emotional learning is also an encore. It's new at the middle school. They're exploring questions such as, "How can I demonstrate empathy by understanding others' emotions?" and "How can I create positive and supportive relationships by respecting others?" Ms. Coleman is pushing into our social-emotional learning encore class once a month for grades 6, 7, and 8. And we still, we have Ms. Kilduff, who comes over and pushes in for the SEL Encore class once a month for our 5th graders. And she's also using the Second Step program. At the high school, we all know our IB is up and running, which is very exciting. We all just came from an introduction to all of the IB candidates, which was a lovely celebration that we had upstairs in the library this evening. The IB classrooms that I have observed have truly been just such a great experience. I'm observing deep discussions where students are really pushing their thinking and respectfully debating one another. I'm constantly reminded of the learner profile when I visit classes, and I can see the connections that students are making beyond the text or beyond the math problem that they're working on. They're providing explanations for their thinking and their ideas that go way beyond the literal and what they can find in the text. They're developing the skills for inquiry and research. They're facing challenges along the way. It's very rigorous, but they're taking risks, and they are very much committed to learning and the process in IB. There's lots of communicating, lots of listening to others, and like I said, listening to different points of view. And they're being extremely reflective. So the students are beginning to explain their own personal learning process, which is very exciting. They're asking questions like, "How do I know what I know?" They're considering all different ideas and different perspectives. These students here to the left are IB film students. They were working on editing their work in the TV studio. That actually happened today. And then over here to the right is a presentation with Mr. Mello from our superintendent's conference day, where he had our middle school 7th and 8th grade teachers come over and meet by departments. So we're looking at ways at how our middle school can help support our students to be ready for the IB program at the high school. So before I get to this, I'll just give a little SEL update with the high school. We have Ms. Morales, who is our new social worker. She's pushing into 9th and 10th grade classes during the 20-minute academic study period that 9th and 10th graders have. She's here three days a week, and she will be using the School Connect program, which builds upon the Second Step program. We have therapy dogs that come to the high school once a month. The students really enjoy them. They are here to provide comfort and calmness within the school. They're sometimes in the guidance suite, sometimes you'll find them down in the student lounge, and very popular. During Empowerment Week last month, our 11th and 12th graders participated in discussions surrounding mental health with the partnership of the JCK Foundation, which is a school program designed to empower younger generations to authentically address mental health issues and their community. We also have good news referrals, so instead of getting a bad referral to go home, the high school is sending home good news referrals that go home for students to encourage positive behaviors and to acknowledge helpfulness. Okay, so this right here is our 3rd grade students who are pictured, even though the title says "high school." And the reason that they're pictured is because yesterday they were given these PENPAL letters that were written by our 10th and 11th grader English students at the high school. So we have a partnership with Mrs. Tarkington and the 3rd grade, where we piloted this program a little bit last year towards the end of the year with one of our 3rd grade classes, and it was a big hit. And a lot of the 3rd graders were upset that they didn't get letters, so we expanded it, and every 3rd grader received a letter. So we have 101 10th and 12th graders, and we have 98 3rd graders. So that number was so close that we were able to ensure that everyone was able to write a letter and that everybody was able to receive a letter. And I have to say, on both sides, the feedback is so positive. The students just absolutely loved getting the picture. I look at Angelina here on the left. She's just so excited to rip open her envelope. And one of the things that I was discussing with Mrs. Tarkington at the high school is, it's interesting that a lot of her students, just addressing an envelope was something new and something that the students really were not used to doing. So it was a good experience for them. So just some of the things that are happening across the district, professional development and collaboration. To the left, we have teaching assistants who received professional development and foundations back in October. The middle picture there, we have our instructional support specialist, Mr. Mick Holman. He's in there supporting a 4th grade math class. And Dan, don't be upset, we have Dan Mahoney's here on the right-hand side, helping our new Spanish teacher, who really wanted to learn a little bit more about using the interactive TV. I also joined them because I wanted to learn as well, and so we were very fortunate. Dan spent about a half hour with us and taught us a lot about how to use these really great technology tools we have. Our innovative classroom cohort 2, I am very pleased to be partnering with Dr. Mohica at the middle school in facilitating our second cohort of the Innovative Classroom Academy. Dr. Mohica brings a wealth of technology experience, and I'm very happy to be working with him. We have 13 teachers that are participating from all three buildings. We began our work this summer by looking at how we could reshape our learning environments to allow for student flexibility and for student choice. Sorry, Dr. Mohica introduced the group to the use of Synth and Flipgrid. And pictured here, pictured here to the left, we have a student from Mrs. Shannon Tarkington's class in 3rd grade. She's created this little book nook here, which is a really cute space to go and pick up a book and read. We also have another student on the far-right side, who is sitting in a rocker, which did belong to me 17 years ago when I had my son. But it's still here, and he was able to choose his own flexible, comfortable space to do his independent learning. And in the center, it's hard to see, but we have Catherine Schutz, who's there, and she was presenting to the ICA cohort on what she had created through Flipgrid. So we had a presentation from Dr. Mohica, and then we had time to actually take what we learned and apply it to lessons that they were doing. So she was just there to share her lesson. So just a little insight into our English as a New Language program. At the high school, we have Mrs. Nelson's 10th grade English class is reading A Long Way Gone about a child soldier in Sierra Leone. In groups, they had to find evidence of literary terms within the text, within the first chapter. And Mrs. Nelson tweeted the picture, and the author of the book saw the tweet and retweeted it, which I didn't, I don't have the retweet, but I have to find it to share because it's really neat. She's also teaching capitalism and socialism with Starbucks candy. So through rock, paper, scissors, students are gaining or losing their Starbucks, Starburst candies. And she had shared with me that there were a lot of ENL students that were playing against students that they really had never had an opportunity to talk to before, so they're meeting new people while participating in a fun learning activity. We also have our application for the Seal of Biliteracy was submitted this week, and we have two Seal of Biliteracy candidates this week. And I just want to help, I just want to thank Mrs. Coleman and Mr. Pearson and all of the other members of the Seal of Biliteracy Committee for their work on that. Pictured here, over to the right, we have some middle school 5th and 6th graders. Our middle school 5th and 6th graders are using research-based vocabulary strategies to develop their English language skills, and they're learning to sequence as a way to build comprehension. Our 7th and 8th graders are building on the skills that they've acquired in order to read and analyze texts and word problems in the content area classes. And then, of course, sometimes there's time for lunch, fun times together. We've had a potluck dinner, other celebrations along the way. At the elementary school, we have 42 children who have been placed appropriately, which is a big undertaking with such a large number. After all of the required testing and screening, we now know that all of our elementary school ENL students are receiving their mandated number of instructional minutes. In some cases, fortunately, Mr. Hogan, this is Mr. Hogan here, our new ENL teacher at the elementary school, he's able to provide some additional service hours with each children at times, which is helpful. And that could always change as new students arrive, but for now, it's working out well. There's really a great sense of collaboration and teamwork here. He works closely with Ms. Castellanos and with Mrs. France as well. Mr. Hogan's been extremely helpful with transitions when needed. He's, translations, excuse me, when needed. He's translated letters that have gone home, emails to parents, as well as served as an interpreter to many of the admin phone calls that have needed to be made to parents. So before I end, I just, I really want to share a quote, and Mr. Hogan doesn't know I'm doing this, but I'm just going to share a quote, something that he wrote to me, and that is this. "One thing I would like to mention is just how fun and rewarding it is to work here at PVEES. The teachers, admins, and students are all a pleasure to be around. And after teaching for 16 years in the city at a Title I and Title III school, PVEES is truly a magical place." And I couldn't agree with him more. I feel very fortunate to be here. This is a wonderful community to work in. So, thank you very much."
Okay. Thank you very much, Ms. Mastretta. There are so many things that you pointed, it's been a busy three months, but I have to say, I love the PENPAL program. I was recently cleaning my attic and found boxes of letters that I received when I was in college, and I remember how exciting it was to go to a mailbox and pull out a letter with my name on it. Now, if I get something in the mail with my name on it, it's a bill. And it's a different excitement opening that envelope than opening an email. An email, you already know who it's from, you know you can get immediate feedback. That letter is really a lot of fun, so I'm glad the kids are getting that experience.
Yeah, it's really been wonderful, and there'll be a continuation throughout this school year. So now our 3rd graders are working on their responses. And then at the very end of the year, after the letters have gone back a few times, the high school students will actually come over and get to hang out on the big toy and play with the kids.
And they'll have more fun than the 3rd graders.
Yes, they will.
So, speaking of 11th and 12th graders, I'd like to, oh, sorry, sorry.
So I just want to jump in, only because it's curriculum and instruction, I think it's a great time for me to sort of let the board know and talk about. Out of my doctoral work came sort of a question I had about how do we determine for special education with curriculum and instruction, what is essential in terms of, you know, for smaller classes or for CO-TALK classes? What is the, what are the essential components of what we should be teaching? And really, there is none. Nobody, like, sort of, there's these silos of teachers making decisions all over. There's no such thing as an essential curriculum. So I initiated a new team of people to start to look at developing for teachers so that they can provide and really narrow down the important components, the essentials, on what children should be mastering, what they should be exposed to, and sort of not making those decisions randomly and independently. So after analyzing our data, after doing my research on, you know, curriculum and instruction in special education, I started the Special Education Curriculum Instruction Assessment Council. So it's new. We just had our first meeting, and we're working with curriculum writers on really developing for New York State essential curriculum guidelines for teachers, for special education teachers. So I think, you know, hopefully Jeanette and myself and Jeremy will be able to bring it here and to show you guys what we're doing. But I think it's a really, I think it's really necessary, and I think that when we talk about curriculum and instruction, we often don't have conversations in the area, all over, about those smaller classes that some students need and how do we make good decisions. So I'm looking forward to keeping you guys updated on our progress, but we have a great team of people working along with the state and curriculum writers. I didn't think it would turn into this, but it's turned into, I think, some really important work, and I'm excited to keep you guys posted.
And I think that's very exciting, especially as the last few years, graduation requirements have changed.
Exactly.
And there's, you know, there's the high school diploma, the region's diploma, but then there's all these certificates and the CEDOS. And I have many conversations with 6th and 7th grade parents of students in small classes because they need that. They need the reteaching, they need some basic math skills. And the question is, are they, if they're in these classes, are they going to get a high school diploma?
And what does that mean? And what does it look like?
And I know teachers try to explain it. One teacher, I thought, explained it very well. We teach what they have to know. The other classes also teach what would be nice to know. But there is no definition of what's that have to know.
Exactly. And I think that my goal is to really develop a couple, a few levels of the essential curriculum, really a different tiered system of knowledge.
Terrific. Very exciting. Okay, now, I'd like to rearrange the order a little bit, and I would like to call on our student representatives, and I want to congratulate them. I know Dr. Love will talk about the play, but congratulations to all of their peers about the play. But would they please take it away?
So, last time we were here, we came in American onesies because it was for Spirit Week, which went fantastic. All the grades had so much fun, hearing them cheer on each other for, you know, the big color wars, and then seeing them in the front, you know, trying to hype up each person that's playing. It shows a lot of school spirit and shows a lot of, like, teamwork and togetherness, which is amazing. And I know every single student looks forward for that, just small week on the entire year. A huge truckload of food was out, was brought out to local food pantries, which is also amazing, and is a big highlight of Color Wars and Spirit Week.
We, well, at the middle school the other day, I learned that every Wednesday they do a dress-up theme, like, one week they wear animal print and so on and so forth. So I decided that student government should institute that at the high school, except we're doing it once a month. And the next month will be the first time we're instituting a holiday-themed pajama day, the day before Christmas break. And then we have a meeting coming up with the Winter Homecoming Committee to discuss their ideas and to see what they want to bring for winter homecoming.
That it? Excellent. I would like to wear my holiday pajamas the day before December, but, all right, now I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Love for superintendent's report.
Sure. Oh, what did you do?
Oh, I forgot all about you. I forgot about the presentation. I just saw Dr. Love twice. Why don't you do your presentation first?
I'll do them back-to-back.
Okay.
So, as many are aware, the district and really all districts in the area have been struggling to find certified or really substitute teachers, certified or not, to cover our classes. So it led to sort of a brainstorming session that we had as an administrative team, and we really reached three main conclusions during that meeting. So I just wanted to provide the board with sort of an update about the outcomes of that meeting, and then to really just start a conversation about what we can do. So really, the three areas we landed on during that conversation were, one, there's certainly needs for substitutes that are within our control. We send teachers out to Bosse's workshops, we host in-house workshops, we get teachers trained, we do testing. And while certainly all of those things come with a great deal of value, we want to, as an administrative team, just pay a little more attention and focus to the number of teachers that are out on a particular day, spread them out whenever possible, utilize tools like Train the Trainer models, just to diminish the number of teachers that are out on any one given day, hence reducing our need for substitutes. So that was the first piece. The second one is, I think we can make structural changes to how we fill substitute teachers. Rather than having substitutes come in for a single period of time, to have them come in for either half or full days, the need is always there. in for either half or full days, the need is always there. Every day, we have unfilled positions. We end up filling those classrooms internally by placing teachers or teaching assistants in there, and financially, that's a more expensive option than simply having another person in the building, another substitute, daily substitute in there. So, that's something we're, we're figuring out a system, how to most efficiently fill positions in either a half day or a full day, so we don't have subs to come in for an hour at a time. The last piece is, we did an analysis of the regional substitute, daily substitute rates, and what we realized was that we are certainly at the low end of the spectrum, or in fact, one of the lowest in the region for what we pay for daily rate for subs. So, the recommendation that was made by the administrative team was to increase the amount that we utilize for daily subs to make us more competitive within the region, to, to try to keep the substitutes that we have that live locally, and maybe even to draw some substitutes from neighboring school districts, don't tell them, to come and fill vacancies in Putnam Valley. So, that's sort of my quick intro, and I really just wanted to use this as an opportunity to start the conversation with the board. Thank you.
Any comments from the board?
Dr. Love, do we know why Hen-Hud is at seventy-two dollars and are locked, it seems, I mean, they're the, they're at the bottom of the barrel as far as, do they not have the, the competition, or do they not have the need, or what's, makes them able to do seventy-two dollars and everybody else is up around a hundred?
Yeah. I don't know the specifics of the rate. I do know, that was actually in a meeting with the superintendent from Hendrick Hudson this morning, and I do know they still struggle to get subs, as does every single school district in our area. So, we did a quick little poll, and a hundred percent of districts reported struggling to find substitutes. I don't know the details. I suspect it could possibly be tied into their teachers' contracts, that there's a possibility that, in the contract, it notes what the rate would be paid for daily subs. I just, I'm guessing that may be part of the reason.
But it is an odd number, too.
Yeah.
It feels like it would be one of those things stuck in the bottom of a contract.
Something like that. But I could certainly investigate further and reach out to their superintendent, but my suspicion is it's something, it's caught up in some sort of legal document, and that's why it hasn't moved recently.
Right, because if you remove them and Portchester, which also is connected to their Teachers Association, at seventy-five, if you kind of take up the high and the low, we are definitely at the bottom, and we come the next bottom.
I think, again, part of the challenge is, with so many school districts located so close to each other, it's not far-fetched for a community member in Putnam Valley to accept a substitute job in Peekskill, Lakeland, Mayapack, we're leaving, Yorktown, right? Those are all, we're talking fifteen-minute drives, they have access to five or six school districts that pay significantly more than we do.
You mentioned each administrator having additional insight into what's going on and subs needed. How's that, how is that taking place?
In terms of how we're, we're tracking?
Tracking as well, yeah, keeping each other informed, keeping each of the schools.
Sure. So, a couple of the changes we made was, we began to issue a daily attendance report that comes out of ASOP, which is our daily attendance system, that's being sent to every administrator. So, it's, it's an opportunity, a one, a snapshot every single day where you get to see who's absent across all three buildings. So, to give you a sense of the number of teachers that are out, I think sometimes when you approve teachers, one here, one here, one here, one here, over the course of many weeks leading up to when the teachers are out, you don't sort of have the perspective of, oh, those were all on exactly the same day. So, I think the report gives us a sense for that. Another thing that we're using is, we have a professional development Google Calendar. So, everyone's asked to put on their Google Calendar days in which they're sending teachers out, and what that prevents is, say, the elementary school from sending a cohort of teachers out to BOCES for training at the same day the high school is doing in-school training. So, to be able to spread out the professional development sessions we have, so we don't have, we don't double the need for subs in any one single day. And then, I guess the other piece was just, as those requests come through the approval process on my learning plan, is just for administrators to sort of pause and, and take a second to reflect on, is this necessary? Is this, do we need all these people? Is this the right day, the right time, the right person, the right program, before approving it to move forward? A lot of these are, a lot of the workshops offered through BOCES come at no expense, they're covered in other service plans we have, so your instinct is, oh, it's free, yes, of course I want to send people, it'll be a great opportunity for them, but we have to take into account that even though we get a little bit of sub reimbursement from BOCES, it's not necessarily the financial piece as much as it is the academic piece, that we're pulling a teacher, we're reducing the amount of instruction occurring during that period, and in many cases, we're backfilling with our own teachers or a teaching assistant just to be able to cover that class.
Do we have an average num, like, number of subs that we have in the schools per day?
We did. Um, I'm trying to remember what the number was. I can get it to you. I know we spoke about it during that meeting, I don't know if I have it written down. It's, it's a hard number, you have to break out, are we talking just about teachers? Are we including teaching assistants? That's a varying number.
My focus would be more teachers initially.
Yeah. It, I'd have to get it to you. I have a number in my head, but I, I couldn't be confident if it, who, if it included teaching assistants or teachers as well. We have all that information a hundred percent, so I could certainly get that information to you. The, the report that comes out includes everyone, clerical staff, custodial, transportation, anybody who's called out in the district, so we would have to just sort of collate a little bit to figure out how many of those were teachers. I do know, I think the percentage is about forty percent of our vacancies are unfilled. So, we're only filling about sixty percent of openings with our daily subs. So, forty percent of all vacancies were left to fill internally, which sort of creates chaos in our, our front offices in the morning. They're scrambling to find individuals to put in those places, sort of playing that, that shell game of moving people around. And so, that number, I'm confident with, I know forty percent of those vacancies, but with an average number of vacancies in a single day, I, I just want to confirm the number I have in my head.
Okay, thank you.
So, the root problem isn't finding subs, the root problem is absences.
I mean, I don't think that's the case. Regardless of the day, we seem to have forty percent of our, whether it's twenty people out or ten people out, we don't seem to capture the appropriate number of individuals through the system that we have. We had, we speculated, there's lots of reasons why we think that's the case, but a lot of those are out of our control. We sort of, when I was subbing, when I came home from college, I would get a call at five-thirty in the morning. Once you answer that call, you're on the spot. You know, you're telling a human, yes or no, I'm not coming in. It's, right now, the system is much more passive, and it's all online. So, if you check at eight o'clock at night, saying, oh, no one, no one's called me in yet, and then you have your system defaulted to, and I don't want to be called at five in the morning, that you don't get called, right? So, I think in a lot of ways, in the past, the only way to get in the sub was to get that five-thirty phone call. Now, because of technology, there's other ways to get in, but those ways don't necessarily capture all of the absences. A teacher may not be aware that their child is sick at eight o'clock the night before. Then we run the risk of saying, well, we want you, if you think there might be a chance possibly to call in, then are we almost encouraging teachers to call in whether or not they know the child or themselves will be feeling better in the morning? So, in a lot of ways, we think the system is exacerbating what the issue is, because it's so easy to opt out of getting the phone call, and it's so easy to not be put on the spot by having a, a person on the other end of the phone. Uh, you will in a second. You get home, no worries.
And I know you spent a lot of time talking about the absences within our control. Sometimes you don't realize that there's an English workshop in the middle school going on at the same time as a science workshop in the high school, and all of a sudden, that means there's lots and lots of people out. I also think that, we were just at an IB presentation upstairs in the library, and I was reminded that nineteen years ago, our high school was staffed with primarily twenty-three and twenty-four-year-olds. And anybody who has worked in the insurance field, there are many people at this table who have, twenty-three, three, and four-year-olds don't use benefits as much. They're not sick, they're not at the doctor. When you're older, and we now have a staff, add nineteen years to those twenty-three-year-olds, they have kids or parents, so there may be more.
Well, when they were twenty-three, they had parents, too.
Well, parents who are getting ill, sorry. But family sick needs, things change as people are here longer. So, I think we do need to look at that there is an absentee component to it, of people who are out, and are there ways that we can, certainly, if your family's sick, I'm not in any way saying, don't take the day, but sometimes a little, like, I know, I periodically look to see, like, I have to go to the dentist, I'm trying to get an evening appointment, and say, would it be so bad if I got a morning appointment? I look to see, have I, how many times have I been out this year? Have I been out? Have I been out at all? And that feedback is important, because sometimes you don't even realize, you know, I was out twice this month, I didn't even realize it, my daughter was sick, my son was sick. So, may, is there any way, I know people get it on the paycheck, but in, in the pay stubs, but in these days of, um, direct deposit, nobody looks at their pay stubs. Can there be a printout monthly or whatever that staff can see where their month's attendance was?
Right. So, I think that was probably the fourth thing that we came up with at our board meeting, I mean, at our admin meeting, was how do we raise awareness internally amongst our staff, so they know how many days that they've been out, or look to be able to quickly identify patterns that were, oh, I didn't realize, I missed several Mondays or Fridays in a row or something of, of that. So, there's a couple of things. One, we have a practice of, we certainly, we invite in employees who we, who we determine, we have concerns about their attendance, and it's just an opportunity for them to sort of explain, is there something going on we don't know about? Are they aware of the pattern that exists? So, we do that typically at the mid, the mid-year and the end of the year, and Dr. Doherty typically runs the data and calls them in and just has a conversation. It's an opportunity for them to share with us, maybe there's an issue that we should be more aware of. So, that's something that's been going on for a couple of years, and having spoken to staff members who were called in for that meeting, some of them genuinely, genuinely left with, without realizing that they had had a pattern, that it was an issue, and I, I mean, just, I guess, stating the facts, some of those individuals who were addressed within the last two years have drastically improved their attendance over those years. So, we know that's worked, we'll continue to do that. We're exploring options of sort of dropping a calendar printout into everyone's mailbox, like, in a, in an envelope, just for their information, that will just automatically generate, like, this was this month, this were the days you were out, these were the reasons why you were out for those days. But again, we think it would be a great opportunity for them to reflect, be like, well, I only called in sick once, but I missed five classes, because I was, I had a conference this day, and I had a meeting this day, and I think it's a good conversation starter to, to raise awareness about sort of lost instructional time. So, those are, one thing is already happening, and the other one, we're working on making that happen, we're trying to program the system in a way that's able to produce those reports for every individual, so we can put them in their mailbox. So, awareness that we really think is key to helping that cause.
There's probably a app for that. Maybe put all, we put all the teachers on Power School, and then they'll see.
If there's attendance concerns, are there opportunities to limit conference participation?
Yeah, I think that was the, sort of, the first talking point, is, we want administrators to sort of question, and, and second question, whether or not this is something that's sort of mission essential, whether or not this is something that's required.
I'm sorry, if there's an individual with a specific attendance concern, going, like, now, say, in January, is, and there's a conference that they want to put in for, is there a way to limit that conference?
A hundred percent.
Okay.
So, if we identify someone as having poor attendance, for whatever reason, that certainly is an added factor if that individual then proposes attending something else that's going to have them out of the, the room again today. And that's, we, we spoke about that just today, that that would certainly be, if you've already been red flagged for your attendance, we're certainly going to scrutinize any requests within our control to have you out of the classroom. From an instructional standpoint, it's, it's unfair for our students who are counting on that teacher being there.
That's the main reason, instruction for the students, so.
Well, and, you know, I have to add that although I'm grateful that we have people that can be pulled, the forty percent, to cover the forty percent where we can't find subs, those people have commitments and jobs of their own that are important and valuable, or we wouldn't have them as employees. So, they're not doing their job because they're covering this, then that, that leaves a gap here. And, and I, it's not as serious as having a class uncovered by anyone, certainly, but I also am concerned, because their jobs are important, and we value the work that our teaching assistants do in the classroom. And when, when you've arranged something or done a plan, and then that person is gone, like, how does, you know, I mean, it's like, that makes it really difficult. So, so I'm glad that we're addressing it. That's all we can do, is try to look for solutions.
Anything else? You want to roll right into yours, or do you want to do public contribution, or roll right into your superintendent's?
So, what I'll do is, I'm going to run my quick report. You guys are on deck, all right? So, you get ready, you guys are right after this. So, we had a superintendent's conference day during Election Day. The, we did a whole staff survey to get feedback, and really, the feedback came back overwhelmingly positive. Teachers really enjoyed the opportunities they had, both for department work, building level work, and teacher facilitated workshops. So, I just want everyone to know that we do seek that type of feedback. We reviewed it with the union leadership this afternoon, and that information will continue to be used as we plan future superintendent's conference days. I recently attended a lead evaluator training at BOCES, where I got my recertification to be a lead evaluator for principals, and it was just a great conversation, a great opportunity to share with other administrators around the region, best practices around observations, and it's actually an opportunity for myself and the cabinet members for piloting a new observation management program, which we're very excited about for this year. Putnam County Emergency Service held a meeting. Part of the meeting was, as always, the district will be presenting to the board an opportunity to utilize the district facilities as an emergency shelter place, shelter location, as well as, there was a great deal of conversation around the Indian Point evacuation drill. In fact, when they held the Indian Point evacuation drill, someone from the county reached out to us and said, okay, this is going on, what would you do? And certainly, that's not, that's never happened before. I think, in many cases, those sirens, when they test them, have become white noise in the background, so it was interesting that they are, they're now taking a more proactive approach to this and calling the district and saying, all right, the sirens are going off, this is just a drill, but if it were not, what would be your next step? So, it certainly put us on the spot and, and forced us to utilize the plans that we already have in place to be able to answer those questions. I recently attended a, a meeting for the council of school superintendents for New York State. During the meeting, we discussed many items, including current curricular initiatives, crisis management and communications, budgeting, capital projects and state aid, best practice in personnel management, as well as discussed current legal issues, including the use of social media. So, it was a really informative meeting. This was actually first year of superintendents from around the state that got together and seek counseling collectively. Some events that I've attended recently, the Color Wars never ceases to amaze me. Every year, I think that the senior class can't possibly do a better job decorating, and then you walk in. So, again, an amazing job by all the grades. I know they, there's a tremendous amount of food that was donated, and the amount of school spirit is, is astounding to, to witness. I'm going to start bringing earplugs when I attend. I also attended the performance of Almost Mean with my, my little son, who really enjoyed it, just wanted to compliment all of the cast and crew for an amazing job. This afternoon, several administrators, Dr. Doherty, Ms. Mestreda, Dr. Incheri, and myself, got the opportunity to interview students from Mr. Baker's class. I've done it for the last couple of years. It's truly one of the highlights of my entire year, I have so much fun. So, without giving away all my secrets of my interview process, the students, they submit resumes and cover letters for a position that they hope to hold in the future, and we conduct a mock interview as a hiring agency hiring for that position. It's, it's a great learning opportunity, it's a great opportunity for us to build strong relationships with students, and then to be able to debrief afterwards and, and highlight some of their areas of strength and some of the things they need to work on. So, I love it. Every year, the students never cease to amaze me of the jobs they come up with that they want to do, and the answers to some of their questions, but I know that everyone who's involved shares my appreciation of that activity. We just left a couple minutes ago, the IB presentation upstairs, where we recognized the students who began their diploma program, as well as an information session for students yet to reach their junior year. Eighteen students are, were there, beginning their program, which is really exciting. That number is huge compared to what we thought we would get, and I just wish each of them the best of luck, and I really want to commend their willingness to put themselves out there and to tackle something they know will be a challenge. I also had the opportunity to... I also had the opportunity to attend the international dinner. I just wanted to acknowledge all the hard work that goes into the planning and execution. The attendance was outstanding and the food left me full for days. The elementary gym show is a classic. I still have vivid memories of myself on a unicycle juggling for my gym show debut. Someone probably has video of that somewhere. We could find it.
We must find it.
The students did an awesome job. And again, it's such a great opportunity for school spirit and for students to own the stage, or in that case, the gym. This morning, I had a CSA meeting at Bosse's. We discussed the draft calendar. Yes, it's hard to believe. We're already talking about next year's calendar, as well as the increasing number of vacancies at the State Education Department and the current topic of exploring new graduation requirements. And then I just want to recognize the students, the Putnam Valley students that are performing at NISMAs, the area all-state at Hudson High School in Hudson, New York, coming up this weekend. And I also want to recognize Prona Cassidy, who was a cross-country runner, represented Putnam Valley at the state cross-country championships. Whoever decided to host the state cross-country championships in November in Plattsburgh, New York, I have serious concerns about. I'm sure it was five degrees, but she did very well and we look forward to her continued success.
Made her run faster.
So my last item is going to then go into the community comment period. So as everyone's aware, we've been working with the Department of, State Department of Transportation about the Pudding Street Overpass. As by now, everyone's aware that our initial plan of closing, their initial plan of closing the crossing late next spring, just for three months, has now been pushed up to very soon. There's several reasons why they made the decision. We've had, I have almost daily conversations with a representative from the State Department of Transportation. We've asked them to explore other options. We've been informed they have no other options. We, just based upon a traffic concern, we proactively started speaking, talking about going to our contingency plan now, as opposed to waiting a year and a half, just because in some cases, our buses were queuing to cross the Taconic, once the construction started, for up to fifteen minutes, in which case, they were now coming in late. And then when we were informed that citing safety concerns, the state was going to close the crossing sooner, that obviously forced us to explore contingency plans. So I've had the privilege of riding on a large school bus several times up through the Roaring Brook community as we explored different routes. I really thought it was important for myself and Mr. Spittle and other administrators to sort of experience what our students will be doing. So we made trips up there and explored different options. Those options included going north on the Taconic State Parkway, turning around in something called Stillwater. I can't even call it a road. It's sort of like a trail. That was a little scary in a large school bus. And then going up to 301 and down Denny Town Road, which is actually longer and maybe more scary. And finally, a decision was made to go out Pudding Street to Richardsville Road, citing, we had no better option. So I know that there's concerns. It's far from ideal. It's way longer than we ever anticipated having to do it. So we're trying to be as proactive as we can, knowing that that's sort of our feat for the next eighteen months. We've had conversations with everyone, so the State Department of Transportation, Senator Serino's office, our highway superintendent, Larry Cobb. I want to acknowledge he's been nothing but helpful. He's offered to make contact with the highway superintendent in Kent. He's offered to help push for early and often snow removal. He's gone as far as offering to send one of his own trucks up Richardsville Road to sort of plow our way ahead of us if needed. So it's, I think we've explored every option that we thought of. But I know that the community may have other options. And if that does, if we come up with something else to consider, we'll one hundred percent consider anything that's viable option. And we're going to have to just continue to push for any, anything we can to help support our students, our families, and certainly our transportation drivers that are navigating those roads. So I guess on that, I will move to public comment.
Yes.
Yep, thank you.
If you wouldn't mind sharing your name before you speak, that'd be great. Thank you.
It's for the thousands of people watching online.
Or three.
Wait, can I turn the mic on?
Such a pro failure.
No.
Am I close enough?
There you go.
And we're representing Roaring Brook Lake. I'm concerned of the safety of the road. I've driven it many times and there's parts of the road with blind spots. When you go up and there's a turn, it's a blind spot in front of you. It's so narrow, it does not fit two vehicles. I cannot imagine a large school bus. So, community members, we were thinking, why can't we have the small yellow bus? I know there's two buses going to Roaring Brook. Am I correct? Right? So proposing of two buses for each large bus, I believe is safer. It's an option. I spoke to DOT as well. I told them, what about going on the Taconic, exiting 301? And I'm sure the superintendent has spoken to them as well. And it is an option if it's a smaller bus. That's what he said to me. But something to think about, I think we really should consider, we're compromising safety for money. And I think it's probably a budget issue. I'm not sure it is, but I'm very concerned for the safety. Now, originally, the proposal was from May 2021 to June. There was a meeting and I spoke to them and it is what it is, right? I was willing to deal with the two months. You're risking it, that's fine. But now it's increased to eighteen months. It's a higher risk for our kids. I'm very concerned for those roads. Not our drivers, I'm sure they're competent, however, it's the other driver. They haven't considered, the traffic patterns have increased. You have to think about, it's about, what, three hundred households? And on average, two cars per household, conservatively like four hundred cars, now considering the trucks that are going to come in, landscaping trucks. All of those trucks are going to be using those roads. So please, I ask that you reconsider doing this for whatever buses, the small ones. I think it's safer as opposed to the larger bus. I'm thinking for safety. Eighteen months is a long time. We're working with DOT as well. We're having another meeting, considering it's a different animal that we have to, as a community, speak to. We're hoping they have other options. I know as a district, you have your hands tied, but I'm just asking if you could consider the small buses.
We very much appreciate. We know this has taken a lot of your time. And we know you care about the kids. This is a small town and you know these kids very well. So we appreciate that. I feel like the DOT is being very inflexible. They're reacting to complaints. But most of the complaints really came, they stemmed from them being haphazard, placing their equipment where we couldn't see. Things that can be managed without closing the median, things that they seem to not want to be bothered with thinking about. Parking, literally, my picture didn't come because I leave at 6:00 AM, but backhoes parked, so I can't see the traffic that's coming my way. And that's where the complaint stemmed from mainly. If we could just have a state police officer, the other day I left, two days ago, there was a state police officer there with his lights on. Guess what? Everybody was doing forty-five miles per hour. It's so simple and yet nobody seems to want to work with us. If that intersection, that median could be closed for eighteen months, we wouldn't need this bridge. So the whole reason for this bridge is because it's not viable. I have no confidence that fire, ambulance, plows will be able to get to us in a timely manner. And this is a picture of the bus that crashed three years ago on Pudding Street on a sunny, beautiful day. So that was lucky. Nobody was hurt or possibly minor injuries. I don't know. But if you want to see this, I'll show you. I'm sorry I didn't print it. On a sunny, beautiful day, our bus is in the trees. So what are we going to do all winter long? I don't see our kids' attendance being good. It's going to be a lot of issues. And I know you're thinking about those issues. I think a lot of it has to do with the DOT maybe being a little more flexible. Or if they do insist on closing it, maybe they can work more days, more hours, get it done sooner, get it done faster. Something has to give. It can't be closed for as long as they're proposing. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Was there any other public contribution on any of the other agenda items on today's meeting?
I have a question.
You may have your question.
About the IB diploma candidates, you said there were eighteen. You probably don't know this number, but is it, what kind of intersection is there between science research and IB? Because I'm imagining that there's a significant desire for those science research kids to try and get into it. I'm imagining the workload might be a little bit of a thing.
So I can't give you a number. There are some I know of. I'm trying to go through my head to think which of the students there tonight are in science research. I know for a fact some of them are. Some of them reference their science research projects, but I don't know offhand. I'll find out the number of the, percentage of the eighteen that are actually part of science research. I could find out. We were very careful to plan our program in a way that did not prohibit science research students from participating in IB. In fact, there is so much overlap between the two, it would be silly of us to have done that. So I'll get a definite answer for how many of those students are IB students.
It's interesting, as we were leaving the celebration of the eighteen candidates, parents were coming in for the informational night, you know, for their ninth and tenth graders. And that was the main question they had, the two or three I spoke to. I really want to know how this is going to work in terms of science research, so.
Just one quick comment on that. With regard to the science research, the one thing that those students, even though they're in both programs, have, it's not a formal program where I don't get homework due tomorrow or I don't have this I have to do tomorrow, and I'm not going to specific classes. And it's basically a research program that's going to be expanded over anywhere from three, you know, three years or less. So it's a slightly different type of program than that, but they do interact. And there's no doubt that they could cause conflicts among them. But the one nice thing about the science research, it's a more informative program.
I'm just concerned about the workload and the stress. Not that I'm against stress for students. I think it's a good idea to have some stress. But at the same time, the overachievers can sometimes bite off a little bit more than they can chew and then feel the pressure of having to keep up with everybody else and that becomes unhealthy.
And one of the things they talked about today is the reason we do these little ceremonies at each year is IB's, I guess one of their philosophies is try it, you know, try it, reflect, give yourself feedback throughout the process. Not all eighteen may actually get, achieve an IB diploma. Many of them will. They've all benefited from starting the journey. And everything they do this year will serve them well, whether they have that diploma or not. But that gives them that chance to, how many more times have they used the word reflect in today's presentation? But feedback and reflect, and like we all do in our lives, is this working? Can I do this? Can I pick this up at the same time as this? So everyone, all eighteen are successful for even having been made that commitment, and especially as guinea pigs, you know, without being able to watch somebody else do it first. But at any time, I hope everybody is kind to themselves and realistic about what works for them. Okay. This is my most favorite new business list because there is one item on it. Just because that's just nice. And I will turn it over to Mr. Fararo to read the one item of new business.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Luciana Giannelli to a full-year probation term as a teaching assistant one commencing on December 2nd, 2019 and terminating December 1st, 2023 in the teaching assistant tenure area at the annual compensation of the amount of $23,240 at Step Three, prorated and in accordance with the PBCSD policy, $92.50. Ms. Giannelli holds Teaching Assistant Level One certification.
Second.
Questions or comments?
I apologize for going Italian on you.
No, that was beautifully done.
Just a quick comment for the audience, all of you out there. She has currently been employed with us for just over a year. And this is for any elementary school with her position.
All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to the consent agenda, Mrs. Jitter, if you could read number one.
Resolved to approve the consented agenda items two through six as presented to the board at this meeting.
Second. Questions or comments?
We're approving additional winter coaches. And I want to just mention two in particular. Mr. Keating, who's volunteering as a track coach, and Samantha Bruno, who's volunteering as a cheerleader coach. So we're approving a couple more coaches. We're also approving all the salaries for the winter coaches. We're approving the CSE, CPSE placements. We're approving Ms. Bennett to accompany all the winter concerts at the middle school. She's a piano player and she will be accompanying with all the concerts that go on during the winter. We're approving a day without pay for a staff member who has to meet with her family. And we're approving additions to the substitute tutor list.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to open it up now to public comment or comment from the board on any topic.
Yeah, I just wanted to report that I attended two things this week. On Tuesday, I had been invited as a member of the Communities That Care Coalition to participate in a discussion. Putnam County was one of sixty-seven counties and communities in the United States that was selected for this Heal initiative, which is helping to end addiction long-term. Kentucky, Massachusetts, Ohio, and New York are the four states that were chosen. You couldn't apply. The National Institute of Health has given a grant for this program to try to figure out the impact and how to address opioid addiction. So there were only four states. Sixteen counties in New York were chosen. Of the sixteen counties, Putnam County is one. And it was a good thing in the sense that oftentimes, Putnam County is overlooked because our numbers are small. But the percentage of the number of opioid addictions compared to the number of people that live in Putnam County is very high.
Right.
So our numbers are small compared to Westchester, but not in terms of percentage. So we're one of the Wave One counties that this initiative is going to address. They're going, it's a phased process. They're going to try to first gather information from these sixteen counties, well, all sixty-seven counties across the United States in these four states. What are you doing? What's working? What can we do to support, share ideas? And then there's a Wave Two, there's another set of like sixteen counties that are Wave Two. So after two years, they'll compare the ones who got assistance to the ones that didn't. And then, so they have a control group. Anyway, so Putnam County is one of them. So between the Communities That Care Coalition, you may be hearing more about that. They're talking about interviews, surveys, community meetings, so that kind of thing. So anyway, so Putnam County is part of that. And as a member of the Communities That Care Coalition, will be actively involved in that. I was also invited to, today to Lakeland High School. They had a Dr. Schneider from, who's the executive director of the Center for News Literacy from Stony Brook. He talked about the fact that our students were not prepared to judge in a lot of respects, news, is this true? Is it not true? What makes it true? What makes it something you can rely on? And students are pretty much turning off. They're saying like, well, I just don't believe anything anymore because like, everybody lies. So he started this program at Stony Brook. He realized that starting it in college was too late. So he started a seven-twelve program. He even thinks that's too late. He even thinks that's too late. He has some K-1 programs. Lakeland invited him because they're looking to figure out how to prepare our students for understanding news and information that they receive. He did say that there's a lot of assistance. There are summer programs at Stony Brook. They're encouraging teachers to take. They're encouraging districts to work together to try to prepare students to understand what's real and what's not real with all of the internet sources that we have. I know that Mary Fran in the high school does a lot of it. He really thinks it needs to be pushed down to the middle school and then even younger, getting kids to really think about, reflect on what, on what they're hearing and reading. And I talked to, I was also invited to attend this graduation pathways that Dr. Luft mentioned. The Westchester-Putnam School Boards Association wants, wants board members to give a board perspective of graduation pathways. So I'm not sure what I'd have to bring, but if we have ideas on that, I definitely like to meet with Dr. Intriari before I go and get her input. She said she would be really interested in going too. So it was supposed to be this week, but they had to cancel it, and it's going to be rescheduled, but I don't know when yet, so.
Just to, I guess to piggyback on that. I know at the state level, Regent Johnson was really the one who was spearheading this initiative, and then her untimely passing has really sort of derailed the work. And I know they're trying to create a new foundation and to continue that work. So I think that's the process they're in now. They have a ton of vacancies up there. They haven't filled their region position. So I know, we spoke about it again at our meeting this morning, that it's good work, and they're committed to it, and they're trying to sort of reestablish themselves. And then I think we'll start to hear when these events are rescheduled and when the opportunities are for that community input, which is certainly coming.
Anything else?
I did have a question. I was going through minutes as well as emails, I guess. I'm trying to remember where I saw it. If you could give an update on the construction plan approval situation.
So our construction plan is currently in the third-party review system. So we have two options for review. There's the state facilities department who can review it, or there's third-party review. What happened was the state facilities department, their queue to get to our review had swelled to almost 14 weeks, I believe. 14-week review period would push us off of our construction timeline. But we have such a tight timeline. What the key is, is to get the work started as soon as possible to maximize the amount of work that can happen here over the summer to be able to reopen schools in September. Any push off of that schedule would force us into a second summer of construction work. The escalation of costs would exceed the expense of going to the third-party review. So we made the decision to enter the third-party review. That queue is four to six weeks, I believe. We anticipate having a decision in maybe the middle of December. Our timeline has been and continues to be the release of construction drawings in the beginning of January, right after the holidays. And that will keep us on schedule to go through the bidding process, award the bids, and begin construction as soon as the ground thaws in March, hopefully. So that's continued to be our plan, and we're committed to staying on it.
Okay. If there's nothing else, I'd like, on resolve, to convene an executive session for one manner of the employment history of one particular person's, after which no further business will be conducted.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Good night and a happy Family Day, AKA Thanksgiving, to everyone in Putnam Valley.